Colby?
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and get started.
Good evening. The first item that we have tonight is a presentation. We got settled into the new building and we got all the furniture purchased and installed. And as the mayor and I were discussing a few months ago, instead of just leaving it up to every department to have their own decorations, we'd rather have something a little more uniform. And we thought through talking about each department telling the story of the city of Springdale through their department. If you remember in the old council chambers, across from the glass separation, we had a bunch of old pictures up through there. It was kind of neat when people came in, gave them something to look at. I'm going to let them, I'm going to invite our friends up here to go through this presentation. We wanted to make sure there's a uniform look to everything and that all departments were on the same page. So we had them come in, look at the building, and then put a proposal together for us. So that's what you're going to see tonight is their presentation.
Hello. My name is Emily Mauringe. I'm an interior designer. I work for Innovative Business Interiors here in Springdale. And we did provide a lot of the furniture that's in this building. Yeah. And so we're pretty familiar with the building. Is this how I change? Let me just, yeah, okay. And how we first went about this is we took a tour with the entire, of the entire building with Colby and kind of talked about where we could add some things that had color. You can see, if you went down this staircase here and turned to the right, you'd see these brick columns and then the windows in between. And kind of when you look down that, it's all gray and cold. And it's a beautiful building, but it just needed some life. So we talked about adding plants to this area. So these planters come in various colors. We're kind of going with this color scheme throughout in the artwork and these. Also, we have a place that does plants that, they're not real, but they look very real. It's similar to what you would see in like, you know, a hotel or Las Vegas or the people that do those things. And they'll be formed inside these planters, so you're not going to be able to pull it up. They'll just need to be dusted every so often, and that's pretty much all the maintenance it would need. And then, so that's that hallway. You can see this is a floor plan that kind of shows how they would be like two in between, and then every other one would have a planter. That's just another rendering. Then down the other hallway, if you turn to the other direction where there are not the columns, we were going to put a few of those down that hallway as well, which would kind of look like this. It's where you go up the ramp. Then outside of the, these doors on the other side of the staircase there, I thought it was a wood wall when I did this rendering, but when I came up the stairs, I was thinking, oh no, it is actually a stone wall. But we wanted to put some planters up there, so as you come up the stairs, we don't have to actually hang anything in that stone. We could set these planters there just to give it a little more life. Then also, you might have noticed when you came in, the reception counter, there's already some plants on there, but I think we can do better than that. And so this would also be from that company where these aren't real, but they look very real. I wanted to use some geodes and things from like, that are natural to this area and incorporate those into the, these faux floral pieces. So the one with the orange orchids would be what you see when you first come in, right after you go through security. The one with the gold with the succulents in the center, we were going to put in the administration reception. And then the other that's, has the wood and the, I guess, we're like driftwood, we would put in the police station side. Also see where the little star is there? That's kind of where each would go. Also, in the police lobby, I don't have a rendering of this, but we were going to put two planters in there as well. There's not a lot of walls in there to add artwork, so that would just add a little something to that area. There's the administration. Then we get into artwork. And Angie Albright from the Shiloh Museum has been instrumental in this, trying to make sure that we have all of the images we need. We've had lots of meetings with her. And so to get one image large enough to print on a canvas, it can get very pixelated and not look so great when you're trying to get big pieces in this, these long corridors. So instead, we were talking about doing a large printed canvas where we're going to print these photos on the canvas. It would have a tag on it that would tell you what it is. But then also, I was trying to think of what goes underneath it. So I took the Springdale logo and I repeated it over and over, and it kind of made a plaid. And so there was this thought of this kind of fabric theme throughout, that this would kind of be something you would see repeated over and over. That, now this is graphic design done by me. We're going to have a professional graphic designer that will make sure that that looks right and will see end result before they print anything on canvas. But this is the direction we're going. Each area that we are going to do, we have different ideas of what to showcase. We're going to do an area with the landmarks. We're going to do the local companies and like a chronological history of Springdale and kind of incorporate the companies with the history, because that's such a big part of the history here. And also, there's going to be an area that's just the history of all the mayors in Springdale and a history of the city council. We're going to have a few smaller areas that won't have as many pieces. That'll be people of distinction, historical homes. And then we were going to add some, a city seal to some of the conference rooms where they're zooming, so that it will be behind the person talking at the head of the table. So then you can kind of see like landmarks, any of the notable buildings, the museums. I love the murals in Springdale, and also that kind of ties back that color of the planters throughout. And these are just examples of photos I found on the internet, but the Shiloh Museum has so much more for, to offer. This, I'm just kind of pointing out where you can see these will be going. So we're starting out with the landmarks kind of in the area with the brick columns. This is the city attorney reception. We're going to put some of those pieces in there. Also down that hallway, anything that has a non-stone wall, like a sheet rock wall, then we'll put something on it. There's also going to be filler added into this, so not every piece is going to be important. There's going to be some abstract art that we're going to mix in, that I'll show you some examples of that in a moment. Then the next one will be festivals and events. Also, this was very good to know, I was worried about using people in them, but Angie has, we know that if they're in a public place and they're taking these photos, it's okay for us to use them and print them. And so we have a ton of offerings of that. Then, one notable piece is when you walk in, you do your, through security, and you see this staircase that's right in front of you, there's bars coming down. And we're going to be able to take a piece and actually attach it to the bars. So it's going to be a focal point right as you walk in. And I really like some of the fun festival photos to be on that piece, because it's bright, it's colorful, and just gives you a good feeling when you walk in. The next one is local companies in chronological order. This one will take a lot of work. This is going to be a majority of the pieces. There's a lot of sheet rock on the wall. Oh, let's see, where is it? Towards, so y'all know. Across from the planning and engineering reception, that hallway is going to be where a majority of those will be. Yes.
Right here.
As, as well as planters. Some other notable areas is there's a staircase at the end of the building that we would put something up. Then, this one will be fun. It is right outside of this door. There's a niche on either side. It's about 20 feet wide, eight foot tall. And it, one side, we want to do the history of mayors, one side, we want to do the history of this city council. But since this is an evolving history and there will always be someone, you know, new, and we want to be able to keep track of dates, there will be some pieces that are just a colorful square, so that in the future, as things change and move forward, you'll be able to add to this wall, and it won't be, you know, stuck in one time period. There's also different ways that we can make them deeper, where the dates are along the side, and that's all something that'll be more developed in the future. So this is the floor plan of where those things would be. We also have, where you see the number 201, that's just right outside this door. I had said it wasn't part of the bid, but it actually is. We were going to come up with a way to either take the marble piece that has a list of mayors on it, or get some kind of plaque where we can add and keep that going. So, so then, some of the more historical pictures that we'll do on the second floor, we're going to do historical homes, people of distinction, and do those in the neighborhood planning area and the administration. And that's in those two areas. This is something that's not part of the bid, but I had to talk about it, because it was part of the whole fabric theme. But Angie Albright has said that this is going to be a community project. So this is different waves of people like have woven into, and I was thinking like chicken wire or a fence, and make it almost look like the logo. The one on the bottom right is actually done by students, and they all did their own, and then they wove them together. But that's something, just a future project, that might go in this building if, you know, a whole community thing comes together, and maybe we put it under Plexi or something like that. Then, in the filler area, so this is probably like a hallway down engineering or in the administration building and the conference rooms and break rooms, we would have some abstract art with the colors of our themes, but I'd like to limit it to abstract art that also could mimic a landscape or some kind of building, some kind of, so that it's still, even though it's abstract, you're looking at something. And these would just be those types of areas that those pieces would go in. And that's all of my presentation.
As you can see, this wasn't just something that was thrown together. They spent a lot of time on this. This is a major, a massive project, and we want to, we just want to make sure, I mean, I appreciate everybody's ability to decorate, but sometimes you want to make sure that it's, it's done by the professionals. And if we, if we spent $44 million on the building, we just want to make sure that it's done right and proper. And this gives us another opportunity to honor our past here, our history, and also look to the future as well. So we think this is a great project. You are going to have a couple of different price options. We, and I'll just give you the ballpark numbers. The, the presentation you saw is $130,000. That includes its tax, installation, everything. But if we, if the council did see fit to pare it down, there is another option that's a little bit less than that. So we, we were wanting to get direction from the council on if you're okay with us bringing a resolution to the city council meeting next Tuesday. But they were able to squeeze this into the agenda, so we wanted you all to be able to see that tonight and give us your thoughts on what, how you want to proceed, if you do want to proceed.
I had some questions about the planters. Ma'am? I'm sorry, what's your name again?
My name is Emily Mauringe.
Emily? Thank you.
Yes.
Was there any consideration given to live plants instead of?
Yes. But that was another meeting we had that, it's that the faux plants might be the way to go, but it's, it, you can put real plants in the planters.
Or possibly a mixture. I mean, some of those, especially along the halls, a lot of sunlight, it'd be western sunlight, I guess, but, but.
Yeah, that, I think the only thing that they were thinking is maintenance.
Yeah, we were just, we figured we could kill them.
We have, we have a landscape person.
Yeah, we, we do, but they're more outside. But I, but, I mean, we can sure do that, and if y'all want to go that way or a mixture.
You know, I'm not saying every pot, because surely some of them wouldn't do well, but I'm wondering if some of the areas that are against glass might, might be an appropriate place for live plants. I don't know. I was just asking.
Yeah, that's a, it can go either way.
How would that impact cost, do you think?
I actually don't know, because we'd have to get.
Are the planters the, the same either way?
Mm-hmm.
So we were just talking about whatever difference in the real versus the
Right.
Artificial plants?
Yes.
Okay.
And I got a hard cost on the artificial, but I do not have a hard cost on the, we can get that.
And then, Colby, when were you going to give us those numbers?
The, the presentation you saw was right at $131,000, and the other one was, I believe, It, they have a way of paring it down. It would include near as much of the artwork or the plants. So those were the two estimates that we got. Actually, I've got the total right here.
Yeah, the 91,000, I took out a majority of the abstract art down some of the corridors, no city seals printed. Oh, that was another thing, sorry. The city seal, they were going to print them on metal and hang them on standoffs, but they also can do it on wood that costs the same amount, which I think would be nice to have this tone of wood and printed on that. That would be pretty. But that's not part of the 91. And then I pared down the planters, like the police station wouldn't get one, and there'd be less of them down the corridor.
I personally liked the presentation. I'd just move it forward if we want to, if everybody agrees. I think if we've got this nice of building, I mean, there's something been missing all along, and you walk in here and you look, and after seeing that, it's pretty self-explanatory to me that this is what we need, because it is a cold place when you walk in, as nice as we have. So I'd recommend this, move it forward and.
Is that a motion?
I agree with Mike, and I also would like to ask Emily, since we are a community of diversity, is there anything that we could add that would help tell that story to our residents who maybe have a disability, maybe they're blind or deaf, or maybe there's a language issue? Is there any kind of, I don't know, like a QR code or something, some sort of link that we could have that story told to every resident?
Yes.
That came in our building?
Yeah. Hell yeah, Angie's nodding her head. A lot, a lot of that'll depend on what, what Shiloh Museum has, but of course, I, I think you saw some of the festival photos that, or examples of the festival photos they would use. That would certainly speak to the diversity and the different, but from the, some of the other things you mentioned, we, we may have to think about, but I'm sure, I'm sure there's ways we could incorporate that. Angie, you agree? Okay.
Mike, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We don't really have a committee chair doing this, but Amelia, you're finance committee. Do you want to do it from there?
Absolutely. So we have a motion in a second to move a resolution to, I think, fully fund this project.
We will, yeah, we will prepare. I think the motion, correct me, Mike.
Up to 131.
The 131.
Not exceed.
And the resolution will have to be prepared, but we could have that if y'all wanted it at the next council meeting, we could have it.
Okay, so, or do we do electronic voting?
Not tonight. Before you vote, though, Emily, give us a rough timeline. If, if this is approved in a week, what are, I know we've got a, we've got a open, a big ribbon cutting and open house coming up. I know we're not going to make that.
I was hoping we could, but
Yeah.
The planters to get to the faux plant place is probably about six weeks, and then they're about four weeks. So the art will also depend on working with Angie to get it all there and the graphic design done. But I think it's about the same timeline for plants and that. So I would think three months
Okay.
Until we could get it here, and then we have to schedule to install, so, yeah.
So three to four months?
Yeah.
Probably.
There's no way to move that open house, huh?
No, we've been working pretty hard on getting, that's a pretty extensive guest list. I think we better, we better stick with that, but.
Maybe we could market it still. I would like for it not just to be put up and, but shown to the residents. Maybe we could do some sort of video or something. I T, maybe you could work on something?
Yeah, when we're finished, we.
Okay. Do we want to go ahead and take a vote?
I think we're ready, if nobody has any more questions.
Okay, so all of, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, so we will close, close that presentation. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And yes, Amelia, you want to, you can go ahead and move into finance, I think, if you're ready.
Yes, yes, sir. So I'll open finance committee, and we have two items on the agenda. And the first is a resolution for a STBGPAA, or sorry, PA, funding for Apple Blossom and Goat Springs Road. And this is presented by Ryan Cardt Engineering Department.
Good evening. Every year, the city asks for federal funding from the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program on various projects. In years past, we've requested funding on Don Tyson Parkway and Jean George Boulevard. This year, we would like to partner with the city of Lowell to move forward with the design of Apple Blossom Avenue improvements from Goat Springs to Highway 265. Apple Blossom is essentially the city limit line, so Springdale and Lowell would each contribute half of the 20% local match. A previously conducted long-term traffic study shows this quarter will become a vital east-west connector of regional significance, even after RDOT builds their 612 bypass. We are seeing more development from large employers, and we have Frank Broadstreet here with JB Hunt to briefly discuss some of their expansion plans. Frank, if you'd like to.
Hey, Frank?
Yes, sir. Am I already getting heckled?
No.
Okay. Not yet. Give me, give me a second. Good evening. My name's Frank Broadstreet. I appreciate the time the committee's taking to listen to our brief presentation here. I'm also joined by Bradley Neal from JB Hunt. He's director of our facilities in our maintenance group and primarily responsible for our main campus there in Lowell. I'm a director in our engineering, supporting the maintenance team there at Lowell. Very quickly, back in 2019, JB Hunt decided it was going to be time to build a new building. We thought it's probably better to start thinking long-term planning and how we do all of this campus build-out, as opposed to just trying to stand up a new building every time we thought we needed. At that point, we engaged a local architect to help us craft what a vision for a future campus could be. Baseline for that, or the foundation for that, was really a growth forecast of our workforce on campus there in Lowell. Through most of the 2010s, we were growing at about a 7% rate. COVID hit, and it kind of changed the trajectory a little bit, but we have both a conservative and non-conservative estimate. If we stayed on our previous 7% growth plan, by 2040, we would expect to have about 20,000 people on campus. Right now, if it stays a little bit more conservative, from where we are today, we're forecasting more than 11,000 people on campus, a workforce there actually located at, at our corporate headquarters there. So depending on what forecast you look at, we're definitely planning on growing and expanding the number of folks trying to get in and out of that space. If you take a look at the existing campus right now, you can see we have seven primary buildings that are located on the main part of campus, and then we've recently expanded into three new buildings that were acquired and remodeled just north of our existing campus. And this puts us at a population center of about 6,000 people that we can house in this space right now. If you think about our conservative estimate of growing to more than 11,000 people, we would end up adding five new office towers, two parking decks, two new parking garages, along with a food center, some health and wellness areas, possibly even some retail spaces. Now, our vision for this campus expansion is to be able to reach into the community. We'll have some spaces where communities are asked to be engaged with a museum, a Gold Star Memorial, and also interacting and connecting with our, our local trail and park systems. However, if we hit our expanded or non-conservative growth targets of getting near 20,000 people, we're going to actually have multiple areas grow out. We'll add in, in the East District and also add in the Southern District, which will include more parking decks and up to seven more office towers on top of what was just already planned in, in the Legacy District. So considering all of that and understanding the potential for growth, part of our master plan development included some local traffic studies. We, we had some traffic engineering folks brought on as resources to analyze the entire area, and it leveraged what was going on at the existing traffic intersections, also with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Council's travel demand model and all other improvements that were considered underway, and it came, came away with several improvements that would be recommended, Apple Blossom being one of, being one of the primary ones. So in understanding that Apple Blossom, we also asked them to do a little bit of a concept design of what it could be, and these are a couple of images of it here. And at this point, I'm going to stop showing pictures and basically say that from JB Hunt, we understand and believe this is a project of regional significance. We understand that going beyond Thompson all the way over to 265 is also critical for the success of it. We understand the resolution and strongly support the resolution to go and, and request funding for that. And we'd even offer our support to ensure that while it's requested an 80-20 funding, that another 10% of funding can be brought forth to help support it, whether it's written as a 70-30 request and application, or if it's incremental funds that could be added at the end. We, we aren't going to restrict that. We'll, we'll take whatever application suggestion the city promotes. But essentially, we are here committing to say, we will help to support this, and we'll also be requesting others to help support this. But our minimum right now is, or maximum right now, is we'll say another 10% of it from a matching standpoint, up to 400,000, because I believe the application's being written for 4 million in design funding, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll answer any questions or kind of open up the heckling now if we need to.
Does, does your complex touch Apple Blossom?
Yes, there's two exits from the Southern Parking Lot. We'll, we'll be adding to that parking space in our most upcoming or most current plans to, to grow, but there are two exits out of our Southern Parking that go on to Apple Blossom. Some of the things we incorporated into our master plan is we had to relocate some utilities to make this happen. We've already forecast a wider Apple Blossom, and that relocates new utilities. We also realigned both of our exits, exits to better function with a widened Apple Blossom and align with the existing infrastructure going up Graham Road, or going down Graham Road, I guess, if it's moving south.
Your hope is, is that Apple Blossom would connect to Thompson or 71 Business and, and even further east eventually, I assume?
It's more than a hope. We think it's urgently important that it connects, and it connects well because of the, the. the volume of traffic, um, that in the future potentially be traveling up and down that. I mean, Dixieland opening was a great addition. I got to drive on it last week. I thought that was awesome.
Does your complex border Dixieland?
We, we do not touch Dixieland, but we're not far from it.
Do you think that would be, uh, uh, used as an entrance to JB Hunt if, if this Apple Blossom was improved?
Dixieland goes right to. It is an entrance to JB Hunt right now. We, we have building entrances and parking lots right there. We have a, a tunnel.
So, I meant more of a major entrance, though. What, what is, what, how's the main way that people get to your complex right now?
Primarily, it depends on whether you live north or south. If you're living up north, uh, or to the west, you're probably gonna come in somehow on 49. If you're east and/or south, you might come up 49, but you might also come up 265 or, or 71 Business through town. Getting into the campus itself, Dixieland has become much more important because, uh, the, the turn lanes, honestly, to get traveling back west, uh, from 71 are extremely difficult and congested now. So, I think it, there's gonna be a lot more traffic there. And if people can cut off and not have to go through, um, the more northern left turns and get up Dixieland and then get over to Apple Blossom, yes, there's gonna be more people there.
Frank, just to get a little clarity, I hope, um, and I'm, I was in the last meeting, so I wanna be sure I'm, I'm remembering this right. But we know that to be a, and Ryan, you may wanna weigh in on this, but to be a, to be considered a project of regional significance, which would allow us to, with what we're asking, that's what we're asking to apply for tonight, right? That would, that would run through regional planning and be an STBGA product, project. We may or may not be successful in that because we're competing with other projects in Northwest Arkansas. May not be successful their initial round. We hope we would be, but.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Generally, regional planning has somewhere in the vicinity of $11 million to give out every year to various communities in the region. And, uh, it, in the past, we've, we've continuously applied for large amounts and.
This is how we're funding Gene George to the south. It's been over several years. Start with design and then utilities and then there are acquisition in utilities, then construction. And, uh, and also Don Tyson to the west to 112.
That's correct. And we currently have seven and a half million in, uh, construction grant funding for Don Tyson West.
I think that's part of the reason we're, we're wondering if, if this would get funded the first year because Springdale, honestly, we, we're getting our share. But we've got projects that are ready. And this is certainly one we need to be moving on. So, the hope is that, that y'all would approve us moving ahead and, and, uh, applying. And then, explain the match again, Ryan, and, and, uh.
Uh, the total amount of design is $4 million. And, uh, with these grants, there is a 80/20 federal and local match. Uh, the 20% local match is split between Springdale and Lowell currently with 400,000 each that each would contribute.
And that would.
Can that confirm the cities? The city of Lowell?
Yes. And then our side in the resolution, it's written as this would come from the 2023 Street Bond Fund.
And Lowell has made that commitment, too?
They are voting on that tomorrow night. That's their.
They, they would have to do it. I mean, for it to move forward.
Uh, yes, approximately. There's portions of the south side that are actually located inside the county that aren't in Springdale city limits, but generally it is about 50/50.
The 4 million design, now that's just a, is that just a Thompson, east to Thompson?
That goes to 265.
That goes all the way to 265?
Yes.
Which needs to be done for it to be a project of regional significance. It needs to, needs to go all the way to 265. Even though if we get to construction, we may phase it in such a way that it would be most beneficial to, to address the traffic that JB Hunt generates. It might, it would make sense to phase it that way.
I move we pass this on to council with due pass recommendation.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second for this resolution to council with recommendation for approval. All of those in favor, please state aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, we will move on to the next item, which is a new resolution. Amending the 2024 budget of the city of Springdale, and this is presented by Colby Fulmer, Chief of Staff.
Thank you. The resolution before you is an amendment to the 2024 city budget. Um, we have item, the description of, of the line item is 101, 054, 421. This is the incentive pay for the Police Division of Dispatch. Currently, we have 27,200 budgeted. We're asking for an $8,250 increase and that is to do, um, uh, on-call pay. We do that in some of our other departments. We, we do need to do this for our dispatch. As you all know, we've had a lot of turnover. We addressed that with the compensation in that area and that's done really well. However, it's hard to recruit people to dispatch. And so, you really need people on backup, uh, that we can call in. And if they're on, on-call pay, they're required to come in. So, we really need to have that as our, as our safety valve. Uh, we do that with Public Works and some other departments. And this is one of those departments we'd like to add that to. Uh, and Chief is here to answer any questions. And it would be 80, 8,250 to finish out the rest of the year.
Move we forward the resolution, council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second for the resolution to council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please state aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, that closes Finance Committee.
All right, I'll go ahead and open Parks and Rec. We've got one item before us. And if, if council remember a few weeks ago, um, Greg Collier, which he's here tonight, they presented, uh, an addition to the Rotary Park out at the Tyson Park, which is really unique idea, the Treehouse Park. Um, so tonight, we're just bringing a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Springdale Rotary Club for the construction of Gerald Harp Memorial Park Project at Randall Tyson Sports Complex. And if you had, do have any questions or Ernest can answer it, or Greg is here as well.
Move resolution be passed full council with due pass recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Colby, do you know the status of the Parks Set Aside Fund? Is Colby here? He left.
He just left. He had a meeting he was gonna go to and I told him when he was done, he could go. Sorry.
Did anybody know anything about the Parks Set Aside Fund?
You know, if I, we can, we can send that to you tomorrow. I'm, if I took a stab, I'd probably be wrong.
Do you remember?
I'm thinking with 2300, 400,000.
That's currently?
I'm thinking that, yeah.
It, I think 400,000 was the number I would say today if I was just saying.
And how often does it get replenished again?
It gets replenished, uh, 200,000 each year. Y'all budget for that. And that's, I don't know how, exactly how that's, how that's put in, if it's monthly or quarterly or what, but.
Maybe he could explain that to us, the council.
Yeah. And we can send you that amount, too, before council. Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign? That'll close Parks and Rec and I'll turn it to Rex.
Hey, Rex, let me, uh, Greg, thanks for being here tonight. And I wanted to pass along our thanks to Rotary. Y'all did a great job of raising your portion of that. And it's gonna be a real addition. Great, great deal for the park and, and honor Gerald as well. Yeah, thanks.
I opened up the Community Development Block Grant Committee. We had a discussion. Um, I've got Dean here. Let me say a few things. I know, uh, I was, I handled this committee for years and it was only house rehab that we had. So, when I took this over, I told Dean, my first priority would be the house rehab. And he has followed that to a T. So, uh, all these nonprofits has been vetted. Dean did a great job with it also. And, um, we, we just tried to cover the gamut, old, young, you know, food, uh, Compassion House. We just tried, we, we tried to do everything that we could. I'm for the option three where you cut it 34% and everybody gets something. But how many houses have you got up, Dean, right now?
We have 20 houses being done right now. Um, averaged about $26,000. We did about 10 emergencies. Emergencies are like emergency HVAC, roof, water line, sewer line. Um, we have four on the waiting list. At a time for FY22 funds, we're still spending, we have about $275,000 left. And FY23 funds, we have 745,000 left. So, we're trying to spend as much as we can of how we can.
And that, that was my priority because that, that really affects a lot. Uh, do we have any questions? I mean, uh, I'm for, I'm for the option three. Dean, Dean, what do you have to say?
So, with the housing, you know, again, our goal is housing. So, 80% of what we have, what we put into is housing. And we've seen a huge difference here. Also with that, you know, we're looking at other options to spend more money on housing. Um, we upped our dates to 1993, 1995 because, again, that's 30 years ago. So, we're looking at getting more houses done for these people here because little moderate area, it really needs a lot of help. So.
And also, me and Dean's talked, I know this has been kind of an irritant to some of you, but we are, we are, before next year, before I get off the council, we, uh, Dean is looking into what other towns do with the, uh, nonprofits. So, uh, before this year ends, we will bring this to the council and try to simplify this. And we're gonna let you all vote on it. We're gonna figure this out. Uh, so we don't have, the man, the person takes my place won't, it will be a lot easier on them.
So, what I've looked at is a grading system. And June, July timeframe, I'll bring it to council. And it's a grading system on how to do, how to pick nonprofits for that fiscal, new fiscal year. I've been looking at North Little Rock, been looking at other larger cities because we're at that point where we're a large city now. And I've been in deep review and trying to figure out the best way to really emphasize, emphasize our nonprofits.
Help me remember, does this have to come to council next week if they choose this option?
No.
They just, you just need them to bless it? It doesn't need a resolution?
Correct. Only thing I'll do is June, July, when we get the actual funding, the actual award letter, I will fix the numbers to fit the actual budget. And I'll just bring it to council and let you know what, what those numbers are.
No questions? Thank you, Dean. That closes the, uh, Community Development.
All right, thanks. I gotta, Anna, are you working on my question?
No.
That was just discussion?
That was a discussion, uh, Councilman Overton has asked for, for a couple of times. The last item, the committee of the whole.
Have we made any decisions?
He's talking about Rex's deal.
Yeah.
Oh, Rex's deal. I, I don't know that. I don't know. What count, yeah, what action does the council take?
Correct. We do need a, a motion. So, when the money, when you get the funding letter, I can start building this process for the nonprofits.
And it's okay if that just comes to council?
Correct, yes.
It doesn't have to come to committee first? Is that all right with you, Rex?
It can come next week when you go to council.
Just let everybody know, I'm voting against Rex. I, I don't agree with the 34% discount across the board.
Would you, how would you do it then?
It's too late to do what Dean's suggesting. But to me, again, I've, you know, I think we've allowed the number of nonprofits to grow, which has reduced the payment to other nonprofits, right?
Correct.
That's basically what we're doing. We've allowed the number to grow, which reduces the amount that we allow. It's from, say, last year's payment.
Correct. But also HUD looks at progress. So, they always look at, every audit is progress. If there's not a progress, then HUD doesn't like funding nonprofits. So, if you see a progress, if you see like, nonprofit is doing 20%, then next audit is 35%. Next year is 45%. It's progress. That's what HUD likes to see is progress. So, all the nonprofits that I've seen, that I've worked with, has, has done that. And their progress, their, actually, their percentage has grown. P479 is like 75%. And I know Compassion House has grown too. So, that's what we're looking at when I do my audits is that percentage, is where they're at. If they're not progressing, then we don't, we don't need to fund them because they're not doing what we would like them to do in the community.
You're working on a, on a process that will help us next year?
Yes. So, there's five items that HUD wants us to be eligible for. For instance, homelessness, childcare, senior citizen care, stuff like that. So, what I'm gonna do is I wanna build a packet for you all to where you would choose between one to five, what is your most dire need. Is homeless your dire, dire need? So, that would be a five. You know, childcare, one. However, you guys would choose. Every, all new nonprofits would have the same thing. And they would choose what they do. So, for instance, Compassion House would sit there, we do childcare and development, or CASL. So, same thing, okay? So, they would have that. So, when I take all of your information, average it out, then I would get a grade. And the top six would get funded for that year.
And this kinda threw in my lap because, like I said, it was all house rehabs. Uh, in fact, it surprised me on these nonprofits last year. Now, I got it in it late, in all fairness.
Only 15%, we're only using 15%. That's what HUD says max is 15% for, for a public service. That is our max.
Right. And we've tried to cover a little bit of everything in these nonprofits. We tried to do a, a li, and, and they're all gonna get something. They're gonna get more than what they've got, than what they got, is my point.
I don't agree with that statement, Rex. They're not all getting more than what they got.
That, they are getting something, is my point. They're getting something.
I'm for option three.
Say that again, Amelia.
I said I'm for option three.
So, you, I, so, when does the council need to make a final, to Jeff's point? When would the council need to make a final, final formal decision?
The next city council meeting? I mean, the 26th?
So, you do need a resolution next week? Okay, because I understood you to say it would be like in June when you knew how much money we were getting.
Really, the most important thing I need to know is if you wanna go 15%, if you wanna go 15%, then I can fix those numbers. Because we don't know what we're gonna get yet. June, July is when we're gonna get those numbers. But by that time, I gotta send a 30-day notice and I have to send, uh, an extension to HUD for those fundings. So, I really, I gotta know ASAP so I can start my paperwork so we can get this funded. If not, then it's not gonna look good. But basically, what we're trying to get is just a 15%. If you guys wanna do the 15%, great. If you don't, then we need to figure out what we need to do.
That money's been pretty consistent over the years, right?
Correct.
If anything, we would hope it would, if it's fully funded, we'd hope it would grow with some new population numbers that we'll be getting.
The THUD, um, has passed already through Congress. So, we should, you know, we're on, on the right track right now. So, CDBG will be funded fully. So, we just don't know what we're gonna get yet. I'm assuming it's gonna be the same. That's why I have that number there. Cause I, typically, we go off what's last, what we got.
I, I think I'm a little bit concerned or confused, Jeff, on what it is that your stance is on it. Can you reiterate that for me to try to make, help me understand?
Yeah, my stance is that we've added, um, the number of nonprofits, which by adding, making the number, higher number, we have to reduce the amounts of the request by 34%. That's what Rex is asking. That's what Rex is asking, is we reduce it across the board, reduce the requests across the board by 34%. Well, that's, and I'm not saying we have to give the same amount we gave last year to the different nonprofits, but it's making us give 34% less than what we have funded some of them in the past. I'm suggesting that maybe the increasing of the number was not the, was not the option.
Well, no, we just, we, there's been no direction from this council at any time that I've seen on community block grant. We did the best thing we could do at the time. I guarantee you, every one of these nonprofits are not going to argue with anything they get. I promise you. But we are going to get direction next year. Before I leave, we're going to get direction on this so the next guy doesn't have to go through this. But all these people have been vetted. We try to cover everybody from Compassion House to the food bank to the clinic. We've tried to do everything to try to help out as many people as we can.
Now, again, every January 1st, February 1st, the application is open to all local nonprofits. So any local nonprofit, the 501(c)(3) can apply for this. And this is why we bring it to you, for you all to take care of that. So we don't sit there and say, nope, you're not, nope. We don't make that decision.
Well, Dean, I think, you know, your suggestion of how we're going to grade them, we've got to do something because if it keeps, if the number keeps growing every year, then we keep cutting back a percentage every year.
I totally agree.
Yeah, so...
I spent the last two months building this, so I'm hoping June, July, I'll bring it to you, and we can have you all look at it, and it'll definitely help out for next year.
And that's why we've been doing it. That's why we've been looking at that. That's why we need a process, or we've never been a process in this, as long as I've known. So, but we will have a process.
We could forward this with no recommendation since there's only four of you here, five of you. And, but we got to do, we got to make a decision next Tuesday. And I don't know how you're going to get a decision into which one's not to fund at all if you don't do this. But that's up to y'all to figure out. But I do, I do like the idea of having a better process, having a, and, you know, if we had a regular CDBG committee, if we had, if Rex had two or three folks with him from the council that also goes through this process, then that might be a better way, that might be a better way to do this rather than just having a committee chair, since all of our other committees, you know, are really committee of the whole.
Mayor, Rex is not remembering, but when we were, when he was on the council before, he was chairman of this committee, and we did, it was before Dean's time, we did do that. And we, you remember how we used to have little subcommittees?
Right.
Instead of the committee of the whole?
Right.
And we would meet, I'm trying to remember where, it was not at City Hall, but we would meet somewhere else, Rex. And we would go through them, and we denied some, you know, with different options.
Right.
Or for different reasons, I mean, but we've kind of gotten away from that. And even back then, it was just 10%.
Yep. And again, that was going on, I came here in late 18, 19, and we were at 9%. I think 2020, we were at like, right at 10%, not even that. Then as soon as COVID hit, you know, everyone knew that we had money to give to nonprofits, and that's when it started going up from 11.5% to 13.6, 7%. And last year was 14.9.
Jeff, I don't remember nonprofits when I had it. It was all house rehab. When I had it back in the 90s, it's all house rehab. There was no, this, and when I got in here, y'all were funding nonprofits, but it was not.
Rex, how would you feel about if the council wanted to do that? If they chose a couple of folks to serve with you on that, get more buy-in, you know, and more people in the process?
By that time, hopefully, Dean's going to have that grading system set up.
Right.
The process is already in place, you know?
Right.
And we're just bringing it to the council. Like I say, I'm going to be gone. So, but I would like something set up before the next guy takes over, you know? So, and we're going to do that.
Okay, good. Well, that's up to the council. When y'all do committees and, you know, the first meeting of the year, y'all can do that then. If you need to do it sooner, I guess you could do it anytime you wanted to do it. So, yeah. Right. Well, I think, I think it needs to start before then.
We're running a process.
Right.
I don't mind about it.
All right, well, we're going to, Rex, would you want to entertain a motion to forward a resolution for option three with no, with no recommendation? Or yeah, you can do it however you want to do it.
I'm going to recommend, I'm going to recommend option three to, and send to the full council with a due pass recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, Rex, you got a motion and a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thanks, Dean. Item six, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I thought we were moving on to that. I didn't realize we were still talking about item five. On item six, that was brought forward by Mike Overton. I'm assuming we'll need to wait on him to see, he can bring it back if he wants to. But I do want to bring something up. We've got a, we're going to need to make a decision before too long. We'll, in April, we've got a civil service commission position coming open. Anna has reached out, and we've gotten at least one applicant. I need to check with the current holder of that seat who's been on it for a long, long time and see if he wants to put his name back in. And if he does, that's fine, and, but y'all, y'all choose that. And you can interview or however you want to set it up, but that's going to, that's going to come in April. So we need to, we need to be moving forward. So I'll, I'll have Anna go ahead and send to you all any resumes we get for that position so you can be looking, kind of give you a heads up on who's going to be available for that position, okay? I don't know if that was specifically, I don't, I don't know what Mike was specifically wanting to talk about, but he can bring that back when he wants to. There's actually two seats up, and I'm recommending one of them be reappointed because they haven't been on that long. All right? Got anything? Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.